Okay, it's seven o'clock. It is seven o'clock, ladies and gentlemen, so we'll get started. This is the meeting of the Wellfleet Zoning Board of Appeals. And our first case is 1920, Barry Smith. The board will be myself, Mr. Sullivan, Mr. Heiliger, Mr. Drucker, and Ms... I just lost your last name.
Morrissey.
Morrissey.
That's okay.
Having a senior moment?
I did, I had a senior moment. I had first names written down, and then I went to last names. All right, so...
Make sure I can the mic, please.
You want me to start?
Yes, I want you to start.
What we've got is a...
I don't think your mic is on, Jay.
Let's make sure your mic is on, Jay.
I don't think your mic's on.
You do have... Speak into the mic.
Put your mouth into the mic.
What we have starting off with, am I doing good now?
No, it's not on. Hold on.
It's not working, but we have someone to fix it.
That's all right, we have backup.
Hello.
Starting off, we have a 1,000-square-foot house, one level, on Kendrick Avenue. And where the nonconformities, the setback nonconformities, are 16 feet to the southerly property line and five feet to the easterly property line. We are adding 240 square feet upper-level bedroom, which turns out, in terms of the volumetric expansion of the structure, turns out to be 375 cubic feet. It's below the existing ridge and does not extend past the existing exterior walls. We are taking a bedroom on the first floor and making it smaller so that it does not meet the threshold for a bedroom per the Board of Health Regulations. It's now going to be 65 square feet, which is less than a 70-square-foot threshold. And that's, you know, pretty much it. The idea is to get an upper-level bedroom moving forward for the family. With me today is Barry Smith and his wife Marie, Russell Fulcher, who's going to be doing the building, as well as Dick and Marilyn Riley, who are neighbors in support of the project. We feel that the dormer and the small deck enhances the look of the building and adds something to the neighborhood. And that's pretty much it, starting off.
Have... Is there anyone in the audience who needs, wants to speak to this particular case?
Three letters.
I do, I have three letters.
Do you want me to read them?
They print nice. This is from Riley. These are the people supporting it who are here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, you support it, so I'm not going to read your letter. Then a letter from William Gentile, dated July 23rd, 2019. "I am writing to express my strong objection to the proposed additions to the dwelling at 180 Kendrick Avenue. The Smiths' proposal for an addition as well as a roof deck are preposterous. The proposed modifications will negatively impact neighboring property values, disrupt the fragile coastline environment, and permanently alter the appeal and charm of the whole neighborhood. The Smiths' property at 180 Kendrick sits atop a central spot on the road at the entrance to a community they are not part of. This canon has led to conflict as we have beautification standards that they don't adhere to. Nevertheless, the state of their property directly reflects how the village is seen from the outside. This ridiculously selfish proposal will create a mega ugly eyesore..." Guy loves adverbs. "...where now it's just a one-story ugly eyesore. Please don't let them destroy our community. Please reject this proposal and fall, and thank you for your consideration." And then from Carly Bertrand, July 23rd, 2019. It basically says the same thing, so I'm going to spare the reading of it.
Okay.
And lots of adverbs and adjectives describing their objection.
Okay.
Three I- letter, please. Three I- letter?
The letter in support? Sure. To whom it may concern...
Their name again?
The name is Riley. Mr. and Mrs. Riley? "To whom it may concern, we own the home at 188 Kendrick Avenue, which abuts Barry Smith's property at 180 Kendrick Avenue. This property has been in our family since 1961, and we are writing in support of this -- the dormer addition for which Barry has applied for a permit. Having owned next door for 58 years, we can tell you that 180 Kendrick has never looked so nice. Barry has improved the windows, added shutters, and put a new window in the front of the house. The yard also looks better. We feel he should be granted the permit for this addition to his house. Sincerely, Marilyn Kelly." Riley, sorry.
Sorry for overlooking that, but it was in support, and Jay already said it was in support.
Right, it was in support. Okay, all right, and no one else? All right, Manny?
Come on, second.
Still questions or comments?
I have no questions.
One question. I'm just curious as to why you don't need an exemption under the floodplain bylaw 6.14, which says...
Yeah, I thought about that.
No existing structure shall be enlarged?
The... We're not doing any work on the ground. And I, and my reading of the bylaw has to be, has to do with additions on the ground that would, would, or may not, may or may not have to be built according to floodplain regulations.
Okay.
And I figured, we're not doing anything on the ground, so...
Because it's kind of vague when it says, "No, it can't be enlarged." It's a vague statement.
Yeah, and, and since we're not doing anything on the ground, I didn't, it didn't make a lot of sense to me to have to go through that.
And actually, just, just to make sure I understand, nothing's going above the ridgeline. This is the same height as the ridgeline?
It's all below, yeah. You can, you can, you can actually see it on...
Yeah, I just want to make sure everybody in the audience knows that and understands that, and it's coming out the front of the house.
For a dormer of this kind, it's, it's easier, better to frame it under, below the ridge and go to the other side. It's just a neater framing job, rather than disrupt the existing ridge.
Thank you.
I apologize for being late.
That's great.
No, I think it, to me, it seems like an extremely modest proposal.
I had the question about the floodplain exemption as well, because it says, "Any
I, I, I stated my...
Yeah, I know.
We can, we can go for a, I mean, if, if, if it's the board's pleasure to grant the floodplain exemption, I didn't ask for one, starting off.
I don't, it's not, I don't have a strong feeling about it, it's just that I don't know if you need such a thing, that it doesn't protect you in some way.
No, we're, we're, we're dealing with another set of regulations which has to do with the cost of, of the addition. We want to keep it under $42,000 as the assessed, $84,000 as the assessed value of the house. So we're, we're all working together to keep it down under that.
Okay. So that, other...
So Jay, on the, the foundation, you feel that that would be enough to carry the building above?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're really not doing very much. It's, it's a, it's a 240-square-foot bed, bedroom addition.
But if you did have to put footings in or something like that?
Well, if it turned out that, that, that we needed to, I mean, we'll certainly check it out.
You'd have to come back to the board?
I don't think we need to come back to the board for a found... Well, if we had to do new footings, then we would be messing around with the ground. Then, then not only would we have to come here, we would have to go to conservation.
Right.
Right.
Right, that's what I thought.
So we're just trying to do things very modestly and, and avoid all of that. It's certainly not even close to a, to a full two-story addition.
I understand.
In fact, it'd be arguable under the code.
Right, I've got some... We went to the, under the foundation to look, and we did a lot of concrete in the crawl space, over the ridge area, in the front of the building. It's, there's a lot of concrete there already. When I first went to look, my first question was, "How can we hold it up?" And I took a look, and it was adequate concrete, as far as my knowledge goes, so put a little extra weight and put it up there without a problem.
I mean, we're not talking about something sitting on a row of cinder blocks or anything like that.
Somebody, somebody took a lot, they put a real foundation.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay, yeah. And so, I'm trying to do a percentage here. It's a what percent volumetric increase?
I don't know. I would have to guess and say, like, probably a 15% volumetric increase, based on years of looking at site plans.
Probably not even that much.
Yeah, probably not even that much. I'm just basing it...
It's only the volume of that triangle.
Only the volume of that triangle.
I would just, for the purposes of the wording, I would just say a minimal volumetric increase.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, it, oh, I see what you're looking at.
See what I'm looking at? I gotta write, I gotta write findings here. Gotta work with me. I have to fill in the blanks, so... Okay. All right, anybody else have any other questions? Are you ready to go to findings? And I...
All right, so I'll move, we close the hearing, go to findings.
Second.
One in favor? Okay, this is what I have, thanks to Will. "The application is for a special permit to allow for an addition to the applicant's property of a two-dormer addition of 375 cubic feet and for the construction of an upper-level deck four by, not, four foot by nine foot, 9.4 foot, both of which are here and after referred to as the additions. Without a special permit, the additions would not be allowed due to the fact that they would result in a minimal volumetric increase within the setbacks. The additions would not physically encroach further into the setbacks than currently exists. The lot is in the R-30 district. The dwelling is a lawfully pre-existing nonconforming structure, having been built in 1953, according to the assessor's office. The applicable provisions for this application under the town of Wellfleet zoning bylaws are 6.1.5.1B and Section 8.4.2. The additions will be constructed entirely on the existing footprint. There was one appearance or correspondence in support of the application; there were two appearances or correspondence in opposition to the application. Pursuant to Section 8.4.2.1, the board finds that the additions are suitable in that they are compatible with nearby land uses, which would not be damaged by the additions. The board finds that the roads, drainage, and other public utilities would not be affected by the additions. The board finds that the additions will not contribute to environmental damage. Pursuant to Section 8.4.2.2, we find this is not applicable, and pursuant to Section 8.4.2.3, the board finds that the building and site design will not adversely affect scenic views from public ways or neighboring properties." That's what I got. Anything to add?
No additions.
Additions?
Or no additions.
I'll move, we accept the findings as written.
Second.
One in favor?
Aye.
And?
Sorry about that.
I'll move, we grant the special permit based on the findings.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we have to stamp some things.
We have to stamp, I, I'm the stamping guy.
And sign some things. Thank you.
We have to give you some drawings stamped.
Drawing stamp. Okay.
Do you want me to stamp?
Stamp, yes.
Yes.
Stamp, stamp, I gotta get a form out for them.
All we need is three.
We need one more.
Okay, we got three, we're good.
Chris, this is the one I give them?
No, that's for continuation.
Oh, that's a continuation.
I just hate extra for this.
Oh, after your special permit is granted.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
I tried it, they fired me.
You have to sign them or date them or something.
I tried it, and they fired me.
I can get rid of this?
Yeah, that's, I imagine.
You get one.
Originally, it was a year-round house, correct? I mean, it was a year-round house, correct, initially? Like, when you said people grew up there? Alfred, you're done, I know Alfred.
Alfred's brother.
Oh, okay. I was on the planning board with Alfred.
Thanks a lot. That's what they tell you when they hand you something you don't want.
You have an objection stated.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
All right. Cool. All right. That's this one. We don't have any more, we don't have any letters on the next one. All right, we are moving now, at Ben's request, to, we are moving at Ben's request to Fitzgerald.
Oh, he's coming in later?
Yeah, he's coming in later. He's got another meeting.
He's got a nasty habit of that.
He does have a nasty habit of that, and I...
Says the person who walked in later.
And I, and I told him if he's not here on time, he's...
We're going to be douching.
All right, because of an attorney conflict, we're going to take up 19 point, 19-22 now, rather than 1921, and we'll come back in 1921. So, Mr. Fitzgerald, Ms. Backstrom, 400 Long Pond Road, come up and tell us what you're doing.
You have to set the board.
I've got, I will set the board. The board is myself, Bruce, Trevor, Manny, and Janet.
Good evening. The, I apologize ahead of time, because I'm not much of an orator. I've come to the last two board meetings trying to prepare myself. If I stumble, I apologize.
It's quite all right, just speak into the microphone, and all will be well.
The, yesterday, some additional information was requested by me, so I've made some packages for distribution. Thank you.
And you're going to tell us what the changes are?
Yeah.
Whoa!
That's going to build your confidence in being an orator. At least one.
Anyone else?
Did you get one? Okay.
Make sure, right now.
Yes, you can, there's a whole bunch of them.
Yesterday, I got an email from Ms. Bates saying that there were questions about the height of the roof line. So there's a, there's two copies there. There's one where I just did the math on the building plan, and then there's a, a small eight-and-a-half by 11 dated yesterday from the architect that shows the line in there. So it's 20 feet, 10 inches, which is below the seashore minimum or maximum. The additional, there were questions about the offset or the setbacks. The, so I, the setbacks were on the site plan, but they weren't illustrated, so what I've done is, is I went through the site plan, it illustrated the setbacks. The setbacks do not appear to, to be in play in any of the locations. There's another question about how far the garage was going to be from the existing buildings. I illustrated it on the site plan, it's 42 feet essentially. The, additionally, there was a question about how big the lot is. It's also on the site plan, in 83,000 square feet and change. What I'm requesting is the, the ability to build a two-car garage so I can put my boy toys in them and get them out of the yard.
All right, I'm going to start on that end.
Any, any comments from the audience?
Oh, right. Is anybody speaking to this from the audience? Anybody have any interest in? Nope?
Any letters, Chris?
There are no letters.
Oh, okay. You haven't aroused a lot of interest. That's a good thing.
It's taken a lot of time.
Thank you for doing that.
Thank you, yeah.
I have no questions on it. The property is a reasonable size, and I think the buildings will sit on it nicely.
That's it. Do you have any questions?
No, no, of course, just a comment.
Okay.
I think the only reason we're here is because there's a slight, under the 50% guideline from the National Seashore, this will slightly exceed it, but otherwise, it's, doesn't create any new nonconformity, because it's, it's within the setback. I don't, I can't imagine that it exceeds the lot requirement.
Calculations right here.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's just a really nominal consideration for us as to whether a few additional square feet means anything, which I don't think it does. That's just my opinion.
Okay, Will?
No.
Dan?
Oh, I always have questions. First question is, did the seashore comment about this?
Oh, I should have said that. The seashore had no problem with the project, she had problems with your math. Yeah.
I have some questions about the math, too, but honestly, when you read the bylaw, my head ached. So I'm not sure the calculations are exactly right. I, I think you're fine, but I'm not sure the calculations are right. And I don't know how much of a stickler we want to be about that.
The calculations for what, I'm sorry, the 50%?
What exactly, this seashore one?
Allowed?
It's just a recommendation.
No, I'm not looking at the seashore, I'm looking at the Nationals' R. bylaws.
Our bylaw.
And I don't know how much we want to go into that. Page 23? Okay. I mean, I guess my question is, do these calc... For the record, how certain do we want to be that the calculations are correct under our bylaw for future use? That's all.
Well, they should be correct.
If something else was going to be built on this property.
Right.
They should be correct. If they're not correct, you can correct them, that'd be great.
Well, I find these calculations very confusing, so I don't know that I did them correctly. Maybe our building inspector could help us, but I'm looking at page 23, and it says, "For lot areas between 42,000 square feet and 84,000 square feet," and I think you have 83 something, "you get 20, 250,000, 2, 2,500 square feet plus 1.43% of lot area over 42,000 square feet..."
Right.
"...for living space." And then there's all these things that have to be calculated under the living space, there's basements and cellars and...
And I don't, I don't, I don't think I put my fingers on it, but...
And I don't think that's the calculations you gave us.
We did that very calculation, which is different than what the seashore request.
Right, that's where I'm going with this, and how...
We, and we came in under, using that calculation that you described.
Right.
We're under by 76 or 78 feet, something like that.
Right, so I'm just saying, I guess, you are under, I believe, as well.
Yes.
But I'm just looking for our records. Do we want Justin's calculations as part of our records as well? I don't know, I'm just asking the question. Does it matter? I did my homework, I don't know.
I don't know.
Neither.
I mean, we've always treated that 50% thing as a guideline.
Right.
It's not a requirement.
Right.
And unless something, you know, really strikes you as being, you know, they're really going grossly over the 50%.
No, they're not.
It's never been a significant issue.
I'm just wondering why we didn't use our calculations in our bylaw. I'm just wondering why we didn't use, they didn't use our calculations from our bylaw. That's all I'm really getting at.
Because they start with something from, the thing of record from...
1958.
From 1959. That's, that's part of the reason. The calculations on the site plan, are they correct?
Yes.
Yeah. That's the one we have to stamp.
And that's, and they're under on that.
And they're, and you are under on that, and that, and the math is right on that.
And the other guys...
This does not go as part of the file.
Right.
So I'm less worried about that than I am about making sure that we, what we are building is 1,056 square feet.
Right.
Yeah. I think that's where...
And we, we trust that that information is correct, because it's on a certified site plan from an engineer.
Right.
We always, we always trust that. We never ask Justin to double-check an engineer's numbers.
Right.
Yeah, that's, that's not what I meant. I'm not going to be able to point, I'm just talking about...
This...
Right, that calculation is right here on the site.
Yeah, that, that calculation is fine. The seashore had trouble with this one, we all had trouble with this one.
And that's on a certified site plan from an engineer.
You have trouble with this one. Yes.
I didn't know where they came up with the numbers.
It's difficult to follow, I have to say.
They are, but presumably, an engineer knew how to do it.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
Good.
Anything else?
No, I have no issues, problems with this at all.
No, I don't either, I think it fits nicely on the lot. I'm jealous of your tomatoes.
If I thought it would have helped, I'd have brought some.
Do I, do I, what, have a motion to close the hearing and go to findings?
So moved.
Second. Okay, all in favor? You've got these.
So, with advanced apologies to everyone, we've got criteria for a special permit, we've got National Seashore criteria, so we've got to go through all of them. And by the way, the, the only real reason we care, we focus on this 50% expansion, because if it exceeds 50%, we have to make a finding that it's okay.
Right.
But it, it's just a recommendation, so I'll, I'll give it a try. I'll try not to mention numbers, because I don't want to get Philip upset. "The applicants seek a special permit under Wellfleet zoning bylaw 6.24 to build a detached garage and artist studio on their property. The property is in the National Seashore Park District. The ZBA has inspected the property and reviewed the application and all documents submitted with the application, including the Wellfleet assessor's card, the abutters list, the Cape Cod National Seashore building area computations, the site plan dated, excuse me, November 2nd, 2018, and the architectural drawings dated 10/31/18, sheets A1 through A4. The lot and dwelling are pre-existing nonconforming, with the dwelling having been built in 1955, according to the assessor's records." I don't know, the only nonconformity I could find, but Trevor helped me on this issue, is an undersized lot.
For the seashore, yeah.
For the seashore, yeah.
So, "The nonconformity is an undersized lot in this National Seashore District. The proposed detached garage and artist studio will not intrude on the setbacks. There were no appearances or correspondence in opposition to the application. Pursuant to Wellfleet zoning bylaw 5.3.5.4.3.1, the maximum National Seashore Park gross floor area of the subject lot is 3,095 square feet. The addition of the garage and studio will bring the maximum National Seashore Park gross floor area to 3,023 square feet. Pursuant to Wellfleet zoning bylaw 6.24.3.6, the proposed development slightly exceeds the Cape Cod National Seashore's guideline. The ZBA finds that this modest square foot excess will not have a significant adverse impact on the scenic views and on the prevailing scale, mass, and character of the neighborhood and zoning district. The board considered the special permit granting criteria set forth in Wellfleet zoning bylaw 8.4.2 and finds as follows. The ZBA finds pursuant to 8.4.2.1A that nearby land uses consist primarily of single-family residences, which will, which will be supported by the continued use of the site as a residence. Such use will gen, generate traffic patterns, noise, and daily activities harmonious and consistent with neighborhood activities. The ZBA finds pursuant to subsection B that this consideration is not relevant, as this site will continue to be used for single-family residents and will not displace or preempt other uses. The ZBA finds pursuant to subsection C that roads in the district are a mix of paved roads and private dirt roads, which are adequate to service the site and other homes. Public utilities provide service to all homes, including the site, and are adequate. Drainage is adequate for the location and will not be diminished by the proposal. The ZBA finds pursuant to subsection, I guess, 8.4.2.1C that the site is not more sensitive than most similarly zoned sites to environmental damage, as it is of similar soil condition, topography, and vegetation as nearby lands. The ZBA finds that the proposal will not contribute to or diminish the diversity of services or housing opportunities, since the use will remain the same as a single-family dwelling. The ZBA finds that the continued use of the dwelling plus the garage and studio will not add to peak-period congestion..." not add to peak-period congestion, since there is no meaningful increase in the intensity of the use. The ZBA finds that subsection 8.4.2.2C is not a relevant consideration, as it does not apply to a single-family residential dwelling, which do not provide services. The ZBA finds pursuant to 8.4.2.2D that this consideration is not relevant, as it is not a business development. The ZBA finds pursuant to Wellfleet Zoning Bylaw 8.4.2.2E that the proposal will not contribute to affordable housing for year-round residents, but will not diminish such housing either. Got to keep going. My thanks to the planning board for all these criteria. The ZBA finds pursuant to Wellfleet Zoning Bylaw 8.4.2.3A that scenic views from public ways and developed properties have been considerably treated and will not be impaired. The proposed garage and studio will not have a significant impact on any scenic views or on the prevailing scale, mass, or character of the neighborhood or the zoning district. The ZBA finds pursuant to subsection B that this consideration is not relevant, as parking areas for single-family residences are generally not hidden from view, and residences do not contain service areas that are generally associated with commercial activities. The ZBA finds pursuant to subsection C that this consideration is not relevant, as the site does not contain or implicate public access to the shoreline, and no proposed activity is contained within the shoreline area. Now we move on to something else. Regarding the special permit granting criteria for properties located within Wellfleet's National Seashore Park zoning districts set forth in 6.24.3, the ZBA finds as follows. Pursuant to subsection 1, the proposed changes will not significantly change the grade at or adjacent to the site, as the existing and proposed structures are very close to each other. The ZBA finds pursuant to subsection 2 that the proposed garage and studio will substantially comply with these criteria. I was getting lazy at this point. The ZBA finds pursuant to subsection 3 that there isn't any unusual or rare natural and/or historic features at or adjacent to the site, nor do the applicants propose interfering with any existing legal access. There are no publicly accessible water or other scenic views from the areas surrounding the site. The ZBA finds pursuant to subsection 4, that there are no unusual or significant environmental resources on the site. The proposed garage and studio will have no material effect on stormwater runoff rates and will not cause pollution at the site or its neighboring properties, nor will they result in any decrease in the rate of groundwater recharge. Don't ask me how I know that. The ZBA finds pursuant to subsection 5 that the lighting is consistent with the bylaws and will not interfere with the visibility of the night sky or adversely affect any adjacent property. Getting near the end, I promise. Finally, the proposal will not be more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconformities, and the applicants have demonstrated that the benefits of the proposal will outweigh any adverse effects on the town and the vicinity after considering the district objectives for the National Seashore Park District as provided for in the Wellfleet Zoning Bylaws regarding alteration of a nonconforming structures and lots and for the granting of a National Seashore Park special permit. That's all I have.
Wow.
That's it?
That's it.
That's it. I tried to be skimpy. Sounds good. Apologies. I didn't write the criteria.
I move to accept the findings.
Second. All in favor? Okay.
Okay. Based upon the findings, I move that we grant a special permit for the construction of the detached garage and artist studio.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. All right. That's it. You're done?
I missed one of those paragraphs. Could you reread that?
Now you're getting the wise gun, yeah. You want to stamp the ones that have the nice colors on them.
Yeah.
Yes. And the engineers...
We have to do the drawing of the site plan and the drawing of the building.
And the drawings, right. And the drawing of the building. With the elevations. So you want this. You do that. I'm going to get him his new look.
Thank you very much.
You get one set of everything. And you get this, which tells you what happens here.
You get this? Oh, you got to sign it. And you want me to stamp this, right?
Yep, I do.
If you sign this for the gentleman, then you can leave and do something else.
We're supposed to take this as a consideration.
Well, thank you for coming in.
Thank you. You get those. Now we have to get... You two?
Here. Oh, I didn't do a real good job.
How many do you need, Chris?
Chris needs two, right?
Two of those and two of these. The advantage of your being so long-winded.
I didn't notice.
I'm trying to amuse myself.
The advantage of your having been so long-winded is that Ben got here.
I did it for Ben's benefit. I wanted to give Ben an opportunity to get here.
Yes, I know that. So, okay, so we will go back and call 1921 Gale Sullivan and Constance Breeze, 16 Baker Road. I do. The board is myself, Bruce, Manny, Will, and Trevor.
My name is Ben Zander, and I'm here with Connie Breeze and Gale Sullivan. And I thank you for taking me out of order tonight in Rockstown. This is an unusual application involving 16 Baker Road. We actually have two applications in front of you. One is for a special permit, one's for a variance. Frankly, I'm not sure we need either one of them. But I wanted to make sure that we put, you know, both forms of relief in front of you in case you believe we needed that. This property, we gave you a fairly comprehensive set of materials for this project. I think you understand the history. Back in 1986, Jack Pettes came in front of this board seeking a variance, actually a dimensional variance for construction of a new dwelling on the property. There was already a cottage on the property, and the board granted the variance with, among other conditions, the condition of the property, the kitchen view removed, the property not be used, except as for entertainment of families and friends for 250 square feet or less. Apparently, that didn't happen. And then, over the years, the Pettes paid taxes on the property's multiple dwellings. It's been assessed as multiple dwellings. And when Connie and Gale came to buy the property in 2016, they actually undertook what I think is a fairly significant level of due diligence, which we don't normally see for clients. They reached out to the town administrator, Brian Carlson, and the building inspector to ask specifically, was it in fact two dwellings, and could it be improved? And they received what looks to me to be some kind of an insurance. There was in the file a note that it was yes pre-existing. And they went ahead and they bought the property. They have since...
Ben, what does the note say? I'm sorry. It may have been in our stuff, but...
I can give it to you. I made multiple copies.
Oh, did you?
If I could approach, yeah, thank you.
Of course. It just says yes in the corner.
I think they did well to get a response from those two.
You couldn't tell, though, whose yes was written there.
Do you have a copy ready? Do you have a copy, Trevor?
You know, it could have been anybody writing yes. They didn't exactly sign it.
No, 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 no.
So I can assume who wrote that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I believe the building inspector wrote that, but I don't...
Yeah.
I can't tell you who wrote that.
Yeah. I know. It was in the file.
Was that in the town file?
We pulled this...
That was in the file you gave us.
We pulled this from the town...
This letter's in here.
We pulled this from the town files.
Yeah.
So we believe that that's why... That's why we believe that note was there by the building inspector. So Jan and Connie have gone, moved ahead of their lives. They've, as is their right, they've created a condominium for the two structures, and they want to sell one of the units to one of their friends. And our firm actually represented the buyers of this unit. This issue came up as a part of the due diligence, and then we were asked to come in and seek relief from the building inspector. We submitted the materials to Justin. He directed us to this board. I don't think this is a special permit situation. I don't think this is a variance situation. I think this is a situation under 48 Section 7, where a structure's been in existence for 10 years. It can be treated as a specially permitted structure, which means that it's no longer nonconforming, and therefore, I think as a matter of right, the structure can continue to exist the way it is. That's the sum and substance of my presentation. I don't want to belate, taking our time, but Gale would like to make some comments. You have letters of support, and I have additional letters of support. So when it comes time for you to take public comment, I'd like to submit those if you don't mind sharing from your file. And do you mind if I turn the mic over to Gale to speak to this?
Not at all.
Okay, thank you.
Hi. Thank you all. Sorry. Bring that a little closer. Thank you all for hearing us. And I don't want to belabor it either. We did write a letter, if you want it. It goes into a lot of detail. But I think the key thing for us is, we really acted in good faith. We bought a property that we had every reason to believe had two legal dwellings. We were told that by the broker representing the seller. That's what the... I'm an architect. I go to the project, the property documents whenever I work on a project. So that's what I did. So I looked at the tax assessor. I called the planning department. I found out everything I could. Amanda Robinson was our broker. She had brought me what was in the building jacket. I said, "There has to be more. Would you please go back and photocopy every single piece of paper in the building jacket, because I need to know everything about the property?" She came back with the exact same thing, which was the septic system plan. So there was nothing to tell us that this was not... Nothing to tell us about the zoning decision, nothing to tell us that this was not legal. But of course, I read the zoning regulations, and I was concerned, which is why the correspondence. First, I called Brian, and I followed up with that email that you have the record of. He contacted Richard Stevens and then called me back. So the worry for us is, we've undertaken a project on purpose with two dwellings because we set out to sell this cottage to our friend Denise. And I won't go into all the details of that, but this has always been the plan. And I have to say, we would never have bought a $700,000 property if it was only for us. So in fact, it's a major financial hardship for us if we can't go ahead with this. We can't afford to do renovations on the house that need to be done at the end of 30 years. So we find ourselves, the only way I can describe it, is in a situation, you know, a real mess that we didn't create, and we need to find a way out of it. And that's what we're hoping you can help us do. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak to this? Can you come to the microphone, please?
I'm Toni Giuzoni. I live next door, and I have been there for 23 years, I believe. And that cottage has always, as long as I can remember, been occupied, either rented or family members have used it. But as long as I can remember, there's... That cottage has always been lived in by different families. I'm right next door, and I just recently condo-ed my property and sold the little cottage that's right next to theirs with no problem at all. So I don't really understand why she's having a problem. They're lovely neighbors, and the whole neighborhood gets along very nicely. So I'd like to see this happen for them. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to speak?
Hi, I'm Amanda Robinson. I was the agent for Connie and Gale when they purchased the property. And certainly, the amount of due diligence that we all did to ensure that these were two legal properties without any restrictions, other than the zoning bylaws, of course, is it's just confounding me that now they're facing this after they did so much when they purchased the property. There was no note even on the assessor's field card to say that there was any sort of a restriction on the cottage, which is where we often find notations about restrictions on property. If it's not in the building file, we'll find it somewhere else. So I just wanted to speak in support of their diligence and actions and how really upsetting this is, because it's sort of speaking to buyer beware, and if it doesn't happen for them, if they're not granted permission to go ahead with this. I don't know how you protect people when you're representing them as an agent in the town.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I've counted these, and they keep falling out of my head. I don't know if I need to read them, but I have one, two, three, four, five...
Are they all in support?
Six, seven, yes.
Maybe duplicate, but I'm not sure that they are.
This is a duplicate. Seven.
I think they're all in support, just acknowledge them individually. I think you have to read them. They're all in support.
Okay. So we have letters of support from Phyllis Ewen and Jim Campan from 75 Hidden Acres Lane, which I think is must be in the neighborhood. David Holstrom and Bonnie Shepherd, number two. Carl Sussman and Laurel LeBudsky, number three. Laura Mamo and Helen Fitzsimmons, number four. This one I had before. This one I had before. Terry Galvin, who is an abutter. And Karen Van Winkle and Richard Games, who are abutters. Julie Silverman and Diane Perlmutter. And Ellen Israel. Ricky and Steve Lacy, all in support. Okay. Questions from the board? Manny?
The only question I had is, and it has to do with the board of how... How many bedrooms do you have? And is your septic system enough to accommodate those?
Yes. So, excuse me, the 1933 cottage has one bedroom, and the 1987, that was the completion of the construction, has three bedrooms. The Title V inspection that was done for our purchase found some problems, not on the size of the septic system, but there were some problems because roots had grown into the distribution box. It was repaired. So there's actually on file with the town, the septic repair plan that was done in 2016. So we are up to date as of three years ago, and it certainly has adequate capacity.
Let me come back to you last.
For me?
I may come back to you last.
Okay, so just skip me a second.
Well...
Yeah, I have a question, and it's not reflective of how I feel about the application, but I'm curious. You didn't find this when you bought it, but obviously someone else did. So what did they do more that you... And I think you did a very good faith effort, I don't... But what did they... I'm just curious.
I can answer that, Will.
Going forward, we should be able... A prospective purchaser should be able to find what someone else found.
Yeah. Here's... When this board issues a zoning permit or zoning relief, what happens is the decision is then certified by the town clerk, and then we record a copy in the registry of deeds. That puts the world on notice. The old practice, in early, back in the 80s, was that the decision itself wasn't recorded. A notice of granting of decision was recorded. So there's just a notice of granting. And so theoretically, when Gale and Connie bought this property, their attorney should have, in his title report, should have picked up the notice of granting and gone back to the town, pulled this permit, reviewed it, and advised them of what it said. He didn't. And so theoretically, there's some liability there. Whether the statute of limitations is passed, et cetera, is a different question. I like to think that our firm's a little more careful. You know, when we were engaged to represent the buyers from Connie and Gale, our abstractor pulled this up, and then my brother went down to the town hall and researched and pulled the decision. So, yeah, there was a way of finding it, but it would have taken a step. And then there's always the question as to whether or not an attorney who's been hired to advise you as to the record title of your property has an obligation to advise you as to zoning issues, and whether you hired him to advise on zoning issues. My sense is they should have done it. You know, it should have happened, Will. So, but it didn't.
And does our lender's attorney not our great credit attorney?
His bank.
The bank's attorney.
Does that answer the question?
Oh, yeah, perfect, yes.
Okay, okay.
I was just curious, yes.
Yeah. Now, I mean, now what happens is, Chris sends us the entire decision, and we record the notice of granting, the entire decision, and the town clerk's certificate, all as one document. So you can just pull it right up in the registry of deeds.
Okay. Anything else, Will?
No.
Got it? No?
Ben, can you clarify, will this came up now because they went to conduit and they hired you to help them with that process?
No, not when they went to conduit. It came up because they have actually entered into an agreement to sell this property to their friend. And their friend engaged our firm to do the purchase work. And so once it came to light, then Gail and Connie hired us to actually do the juror work.
Yes, because you've got a solution.
No, I...I'm waiting for it.
No, no, he's got a solution.
I wanted to admire what you did. You caused the problem by finding this, but you managed to blame your brother.
No, no, no. I'm crediting him with finding it. I actually credited him with being the one who actually...
If your brother hadn't found this, we wouldn't be here.
No, it's true. Well, I'm sorry, it was Tom, but yeah, but I did get it.
But anyway, on a very serious note, we get one of these every couple of years, where the town is just messed up. And then some people who, you know, doing the best they can to, you know, buy property and do a due diligence, under a strict interpretation of the law, might be left holding the bag. I don't, and I'll get back to that in a minute, but well, maybe I'll cover it now. You know, 40...was it 48 subsection 7 possibly allows them to claim the structure can't be knocked down or reduced to 250, but it doesn't do anything for the use of two prop... two item...two dwellings on the same property. I think what needs to happen is, we need to eliminate the conditions as almost an amendment of the prior order. And, you know, what happened here is, I can't think of any innocent or kind explanation as to the town's conduct here. You know, I'm old enough, so I don't care about being politically correct, but all the building inspector had to do in 86 was drive by, and he could have figured out that the property hadn't been reduced to 250 square feet. I know even then, they did drive by. So I don't know what went on, I'm not going to speculate, but it's not right. And then these folks go to two people who I won't name, who I know, and I'm not surprised they didn't help them. They've never helped me when I went to them, and so I'm just not surprised. And they should have told...they should have...they had access. The then part-time building inspector had to walk 20 feet, and he could have gone to the building file and find out what was going on. And the so-called town planner should have known what to do, but they didn't. So I would give them relief, but I would do it by eliminating the conditions in the old order.
Except I'm not sure that's sufficient, because you have to remember that the old order was a granting of a variance for dimensional relief. It wasn't a variance to allow two dwellings on one property.
Well, that's the only thing that I see that prevents them from using the dwelling.
I don't...no, I disagree. The zoning code doesn't allow you to have two dwellings on one lot. So I think the relief, the only relief that would allow them to move forward and have this property be legitimate would be a granting of variance from the zoning requirement that you can't have two dwellings on one property. And that's what we applied for. I guess, even if you remove the conditions, nobody ever applied for a variance from that two-dwelling requirement.
It was never a variance case to begin with.
Well, it was a sideline setback.
It was a side...it was a special permit case.
It was a special permit case.
Oh, I believe it was a var...
It was a variance case, but it shouldn't have been a variance case, is what we're saying.
It shouldn't have been. I believe that in order for this property to be legitimate now, because it's two dwellings, a variance from the requirement that you have two dwellings is really the appropriate relief, which is what we applied for. We applied for a special permit also. But I think that's the one that somebody could come back later and say, "Well, fine, you removed the conditions," but nobody ever granted a variance from two dwellings.
I guess the issue is, what would make your client comfortable?
A variance.
Okay. I mean, even though, I'm not quite sure it's the way to go, I don't want to see these people go through any more issues.
It's a tough standard to meet, but I believe that because no one has ever granted a variance from the requirement that you can't have two dwellings on a lot, even removing conditions on the prior dimensional variance doesn't really give them that permission. And even your determination that, look, 48.7, you know, allows the structure to be there, you know, that's an arguable point. Somebody may come back later and say, "Look, 48.7 doesn't protect you against use change." So I think it's...
Trouble with the variance is that we have to do it based on either topography or financial hardship.
Shape.
And the hardship, I understand. I certainly do understand, except that it's a second home, so the hardship is kind of like tricky.
I think the fact that they planned this whole project based on this idea, and now they're selling, and their sale is held up, I think it's a significant hardship. The question is, how do you relate that hardship to topography soil? And sometimes zoning boards kind of hold their nostrils and...
I'm just do it, not refer to the law.
Yeah, right. Well, you know, it's...you know, it's clearly, you know, they had every reason to believe that this was a perfectly legitimate two-dwelling property. There's nothing in the file that suggests, until you go really far into it, there's no obvious reason that anybody would find those conditions and discover, oh, you know, particularly since it goes back to 1987, so...
All of a sudden, it seems like a long time ago. I don't know why.
It's a while back.
I would ask the board, if you could, to see if you could see fit to grant a variance from that requirement, just because I think that solves the problem for this applicant and for the buyer.
What do we have to say, though, about the reason for the variance? That's the challenge to me.
In terms of the...if we're going to grant a variance, we just need to get a bit creative. And seeing paragraph A is, when I looked at the plan, the shape of this property is does not...is not reflective of most of the other lots in the area. So if there's something unique about this, its shape is.
Okay.
All right.
I think that will satisfy A. And then I think the rest are, you know, there's hardship, there's substantial public good, we're righting a wrong. And this has been going on, the intent and the purpose has gone on for, since 1987 or '86. That's over 30 years. So I don't think there's any harm that's done by granting a variance.
I don't know where I'm going with this, but if these two things have been built in 1920, like a lot of cottages are built on one piece of land, before there was zoning, it would be pre-existing nonconforming, right?
Absolutely.
Right.
These were built, or the second one was built after zoning existed, so that would make it noncompliant, correct?
Yes.
And if something's noncompliant, then the town could make you change it, tear it down, whatever, for up to 10 years, right? So what...so after the 10 years, then, is somehow or another legal by virtue of having existed for more than 10 years, without the town taking action? Is there...what's...
I think the town...
Is there a name for that? What is that status?
Yeah, it's called the Statute of Repose. It's 48 section...it's the first section of 48, section 7, that says that if something is built that violates zoning, structural aspects of zoning, for...and exists for six years with the grant of a building permit, or for 10 years without the grant of a building permit, the town can't compel removal of the structure. But that's...that doesn't go so far as to say that you're allowed to commence and continue a use that violates something.
It doesn't cover uses.
It can cover uses, and the classic example is, you build a bowling alley, and the use is so inextricably linked to the structure, then there is some limited case law that allows 48 section 7. The second part of 48 section 7, which was just enacted in November of 2016, says that where a structure is not in compliance with zoning and has existed for 10 years, regardless of whether there was a building permit, then it can be treated as a pre-existing nonconforming structure for the purposes of special permits. Again, there's no case law out there yet, but it doesn't really look, from the language that it's meant to cure is use issues.
So one could argue that the reduction in the square footage that was originally requested would now be legal by virtue of having existed for that long, but the use of it, as a dwelling...
Yes, you could argue that the square footage of the dwelling, you know, because it's existed, you could argue that, but I'm not sure that the square footage threshold for a guest studio under the definition is the same as a dimensional requirement of a setback or a height or a lot coverage or something like that. So I really think that the only relief that would really solve this in perpetuity would be to grant a variance. If the board wants to make a finding that this lot has a shape that's unlike other lots, that the shape, you know, created the location of the structure on the site, and the second dwelling use is something that, you know, was...has been there for 30 years, and that that creates a hardship. It's...I'm going to be frank, I don't think this is a variance, that in the...if it were appealed and brought before, you know, the land court or the spirit court, I'm not sure it would stand. But it's not uncommon, as a problem-solving exercise, to submit appeals for variance is where people are in support. Nobody appeals. You wait the 21 days, and 20 days, and it stands, so...
I'm not altogether sure we have to spell out exactly why we're doing it a variance.
I don't think you do.
No, I think we might just sort of let the facts stand as they may, and say, "It's a variance, that's what we're doing," and end of story.
Sharon, I'd also like to point out, if you read the findings part, that, you know, that is blank here, the intro part talks about relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good.
Right.
And without nullifying or substantially derogating the intent and the purpose of the bylaw. And I think, given the facts, we've met that totally in this instance.
Yep, I agree. I agree. The one advantage, I know this has been painful, but the one advantage of this is that you now are on the record as having notified all of your butters, and you have found out if there was anybody out in the woodwork who was going to object to this. So while I know this hasn't been fun, I'm not sure that it was altogether a useless exercise.
Problem solving.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
So...
Shall we move to findings?
Yeah, we can move to findings. I have...
Close the hearing?
The close of...
Move to close the hearing, go to findings.
All right, you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So I have these findings, which I've been gradually scribbling on as we go along, and they may get scribbled on some more, but this is what you got so far. "This is an application for a variance from bylaws 4 parentheses 5 to continue using a second dwelling on structure on a single lot. The petitioners are requesting a determination that their cottage structure is lawfully pre-existing for zoning purposes pursuant to Massachusetts general law C40A7. The lot is in the R-30 district. There are two dwellings on the property, a 610-square-foot cottage built in the 1930s and a 2,072-square-foot house built in 1987 after the previous owner was granted a variance in 1986 from the minimum yard and sideline setbacks requirements by the Board of Appeals in case number 8621. Conditions on the granting of the variance included that the cottage be reduced to 250 square feet upon completion of the new dwelling, that cooking facilities be removed from the cottage, and that any use of the cottage be for family or friends with no fee charge to meet the criteria for private guest house. These conditions were not complied with by the then-owner. The town of Wellfleet did not enforce the conditions outlined in paragraph 3 above. Prior to purchasing the property in 2016, the present applicants contacted the then-Wellfleet Building Inspector and the then-assistant town manager, town planner regarding the cottage. The present applicants received confirmation that the cottage, as well as the 1987 dwelling, were lawfully pre-existing structures. Following the purchase of the property, the applicants obtained a building permit and renovated the cottage's kitchen, and since the time that applicants purchased the property, they have paid property taxes on the parcel valued as a multiple-dwelling property. The applicants purchased the property in 2016 with the understanding that the two-dwelling units on the property were lawfully pre-existing buildings. They have provided evidence in the form of letters to the Building Department and the assistant town manager, town administrator, town planner that they attempted to resolve the question before their purchase. The assessor's records show that the two dwellings are listed as separate dwellings for tax purposes, and that the town has taxed the two as separate dwellings. Two dwellings have existed and been utilized on the property for year-round residences over three decades without any known objection from anyone on behalf of the town of Wellfleet despite the variance conditions outlined in paragraph 3 above. There will be no change in use, there will be no increase in use, there will be no physical change to either dwelling unit. The use conforms with the objectives of the R-30 district as stated in Wellfleet zoning bylaw 3 dot 2. There were 11 appearances in course or course and correspondence in support of the application. There were no appearances or correspondence against the application. There was no objection from a butters on what were done. In consideration of fairness to the applicants and considering the failure of the town of Wellfleet since 1987 with respect to enforcement of the conditions outlined in paragraph 3 above, the order in case number...no, I'm not going to say it. I'm taking that one out. "The variance will not result in the two dwellings being more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood than they are now, and the applicants have demonstrated that the benefits of the variance will outweigh any adverse effects on the town and the vicinity after considering district objectives for the district as provided for in Wellfleet zoning bylaws." And I could add to that, the relief may be granted without...
My men?
I could add to that, that relief may be granted without detriment to the town.
Yes.
Yeah, I may add that there. Based on...yeah, so...okay? Anything?
No.
Anybody wants to add?
My men?
Anything anyone wants to add? I can clean this one up a bit.
I'll move we accept the findings as written, as written and amended.
Written and amended.
Second?
All in favor? Based on the findings, move to grant the variance?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr., I would ask, that we be allowed to withdraw the application for the special permit without prejudice?
Yes.
I'll move to allow them to withdraw.
Second.
Move this back up one second. Yep. Who moved to grant? Trevor did, and Manny seconded. And then, now Ben has asked to withdraw the application for this special permit. Trevor has moved. Manny has seconded. All in favor? Okay.
Thank you, Alfred. It was good to see you all again.
Yes, always good to see you, Ben.
They don't have to stamp it.
We don't have anything to stamp.
We don't have to stamp anything, I mean...
No.
No, we don't have to stamp anything. I think you will just get a copy of the decision.
We'll get the decision for recording in the registry of deeds.
Yep, and then you'll be done.
Yeah, thank you all.
And then at least you'll be out in the open.
Good luck.
I've never been to a zoning board without drawings, I feel naked.
You did fine, and you're going to the town for help, prove that no good deed goes unpunished.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Good luck, yes, yeah.
That's more enjoyable.
Okay. Do we have...we have one issue for the board, and do we have minutes?
You're supposed to do the July minutes.
Minutes, yes, okay, so I...
Do I sound...
It's been so long, we don't remember the July minutes, but does anybody want to move the July minutes?
I remember they were particularly well-written.
I think they were particularly well-written.
I'll move that we accept them.
One second.
Okay, all in favor?
That's right.
Okay, one other thing I want the board's approval to do, at Bruce's suggestion, and I think it is a good one, is that, as you know, the Habitat permit is being appealed. And I would like, on behalf of the board, to write a letter to the selectmen asking that we have town council represent us vigorously in defending the decision.
Which we have now granted twice.
Which we have now granted twice, and which the planning board has granted once.
Right.
Yes.
What happens, just to amplify, just for a second.
Sure.
What the town does typically is, they tell town council to appear, monitor the proceedings. Town council does that and doesn't do anything unless there's a procedural issue regard to the board, and they leave it up to the not-for-profit, whether it's Habitat for Humanity or Ted Malone's outfit to do it. And, you know, I think, if the select board really supports affordable housing, they're going to have to spend money. And they're going to have to, in my opinion, let town...authorize town council to give a full-throated support to the comprehensive permit. That's their call, it's not ours. These people have a right to appeal, and the town, in my opinion, should vigorously oppose the appeal. the appeal. It's up to the board of selectmen, but I think we should tell them we'd like them to do that for a change.
I would support that argument.
Absolutely.
Since I recused myself from those, since I recused myself from those proceedings, I don't know if I can have my name on that.
Fine, I'll put my name on it.
I don't want to create any.
No, I'm going to, I'm going to write it on behalf of the board and I am going to sign it.
I don't want to create any issue, you know, because I recused myself.
I'm going to write it on behalf of the board and I'm going to sign it. I'm not going to list people's names.
Okay.
Do you think, you think they're already mad enough at you?
I just don't want to create any issue.
Right.
Because, you know, because I recused myself, I don't want to sign this letter.
I think this is something to create an issue over. The town has got to support affordable housing with more than thoughts and prayers.
I don't want to create an issue.
Pardon me?
Janet is afraid that she was involved.
What?
I don't want to create an issue with the butters attorney. That's my only.
Yeah, she doesn't want to be part of this, party to a suit. And I agree, that's fine. But I'm just going to sign it on behalf of the board. And that'll cover it. And.
Because then, if they go back, if they go back and look at who was on that board for that case, we'll see.
Yeah, you will not be on that board for that case. So, it'll be fine, so it'll be fine.
It's okay, it's not a problem.
Yeah, it's fine. And Mick says that Steve Oliver is interested in joining us, so that is.
That'd be terrific.
Yep. So, yeah, it's fine.
All right, thank you.